There are no log on servers available.
Oh, we'll let that happen, so we'll go ahead and get the board started here. Clark, can you call the roll, please?
Mike Wagner.
Here.
James Hartman.
Here.
Gary Demaschke.
Here.
Cindy Wrighte.
Here.
Isaiah Crow.
Here.
Mary Michelle.
Here.
I do have a couple of postings, please don't mind me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will make one change to the agenda. I would like to move up Business 8.1, a student, since we have all of our great students from the FFA, we will move it right after public input if we have any which are not listed. I will take a motion for that change and the agenda. Guys, any questions or other changes you want to hear? Hearing none, Mike.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Bart.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of September 24th, 2018?
So, I'll sign it.
Isaiah and James, any questions? Hearing none, Mike.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Bart.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll and accruals disbursements as posted?
So who, I'll sign it.
Thank you, Mike and James. Any questions?
I have a question that was just inquisitive. For the Horizon High School, does our tuition change based on the number of enrolled members?
Yes.
Okay.
So it is a very specialized program.
Right.
So it's based on FTE, who we have or don't have participating in those programs.
Anything else? Hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Bart.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
I don't believe we have any public input, so we will then go to our FFA members and give us our little, or give us your update.
Okay, well first of all, we just wanted to say thank you for letting us come and talk to you for just a little bit tonight. My name is Kim Hauser, I am the anchor coach teacher and FFA advisor, and this is my 21st year, so this will be my... So today I brought my nine-person officer team with, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about our FFA trips that we have coming on first semester. Just a little background history, right now we have about, I'd say anywhere between 50 and 75 FFA members, grade seven, and they can be FFA members up until their third year after they graduate from high school, and we have quite a few kids who take advantage of that. This year, we will have quite a few of our graduates that will come back and fill out more data patients. We've got one member who is going to participate in the National FFA Band, Mosel West, this will be his second year participating, so that's pretty exciting. And this summer, this officer team met to make some goals and kind of figure out what they wanted to focus on, so I'll let Cassidy do it, she's our track president this year. She'll talk a little bit about what we worked on over the summer.
So throughout the year, we do leadership conferences that we send our employees to, which these guys are going to talk a little bit about those. I'm done talking. But at our officer training over the summer, we plan out community service, so we try to do one community service a month. And like this next week, we have for, what, two days from now, sorry, we have the blood drive here. And then last month, we had our penny award, which raises over a thousand dollars for the blood victims, and the officer team were paying a way to run the poundhouse soon, hopefully. And then every month, we also try to do a social activity, so our members can have fun with the officers, meet to know each other. So this last month, we did the Cornice, and then we have the, we're going to go see them this month, and then we have a request coming up later in the year. And then, so this year, we're trying to get the high school more involved, because recent years, we've had like really great middle school involvement, but the high school involvement has gone way down, so we're trying to recruit high school members.
Hi. I'm Kathy Corral.
I'm Katie Rofford.
And I'm Lindsay.
All right, and we're going to talk about national convention. So last year, we went to a concert for Rascal Flatts, and this year we'll be going to Martha Brooks, which is really exciting, because it's very secure. So that, we're going to go see him, and hopefully we get really good seats, and then we're also going to watch and listen to Kyle S- Shield, and he's a motivational speaker, which is always awesome, because I would, we're going to ask him to discover him, and it's always a great way to start a convention. And we always do bus games on our way there, so we all get to know each other, because we go to different schools, we would call them, it's low tide sock, and we get to go, and we do like the talent shows, we all get like, get involved, we get like people singing. Last year, me and Katie did a party in the FFA. I don't know, CD. And then they also do like little bus games, so like you have to get up and meet new people, which is really fun. And then we do... Oh yeah, special items, so we have to try to find a special item, where we go on floors, which Katie will talk about, and we have to try to find one, and the best one wins. We got second place last year.
What was your special item?
We got a horn from the bison farm.
And a bison hut.
Yeah. And they can't steal it, and they can't buy it, so they have to, they have to get it somehow. Yeah, we just ask them, and you just get... And there are...
Oh yeah, here's a bison hut.
You can't, you can't bring on like urine, or...
Ants.
Anything like that. I know it's not, I know it's no fun, but it's necessary. Just saying. So for tours, this year, we're going to RD shrimp farm, and so they commercially raise and sell shrimp, and we will get to try some after the tour. And then we always, well, I don't, we always go to Aldines. We try to... Yeah. So we're going to Candy Factory, Aldines, and then we're going to Cal State Dairy Farm this year.
And other recreational activities that we do, so this is going to be my first year going to national conventions, I'm really excited about. And so we're going to comedy sports, which is like an improv area, and then Hannah's haunted acres, which I'm really excited about. But the Southers, isn't that exciting? I've heard a lot about stories about like students, like making like syrup people go. And...
You tell them her name, and then just go.
I totally want to hear that.
Fantastic, thanks. One actually followed us on our bus last year, and he was sitting in the bus and just like talking the horn, and it was awesome. It was terrifying.
I think you and you terrified too.
Okay, so in November, so November 9th through the 10th, yeah, through the 10th, we have Stevens Park, we have 12 and 360 workshops, the leadership workshops, and we allow eight state students to come along, and it's $50 per student, and it's really a fun workshop that I haven't been to yet, but I'm excited to go.
It's, there's two of them, one's for the older members and one's for the newer members, just getting into a little bit. I've been to the younger member one twice now, it was, well, it was good fun. It's more or less, you go there and you do leadership, they have speakers come in, and they make you off with the instructors, they try to get every chapter with a different chapter, so you're asking with all your friends. So a lot of different things, every time, both times I went, it was different, because two different speakers each time. It's, they have a dance in the evening, the night, when you first get there, there's like a startup kind of thing, they're pretty much saying, this is what it is and everything, and you go in and you do your first workshop, and then you come out, and there's like a dance normally afterwards, everybody, you know, participates in, pretty, a lot of fun. Then you wake up the next morning, and you do two more rounds of workshops, and then they do a closing ceremonies, and you head home.
I'm Jared McSimpson.
And I'm John One.
And we're going to talk about halftime conference. So this year, it is going to be a Stevens Point on January 11th and 12th. So halftime conference is meant for two officers or very active members. So you're selected by Ms. Hauser, and then you go and you work with members from other schools.
It's run by the state officers, and they just have you do a bunch of activities involving like leadership and recruitment, and... Well, one that Jared and I went to last year, we did like a whole bunch of career planning stuff, which helps for me, because I know who I'm with. That was good for me.
You also fill out workbooks throughout the sessions. I believe there were two sessions, the first night, and then a dance, and then followed the next day by four or five more sessions and lunch before we were dismissed. You also, we also did trust activities, because we were seated with other members rather than our own school, so that we would get to know members from the other state, from the other areas of states. And then, we also did activity sharing, so we got to hear what our chapter does versus what their chapter does. And I believe that wraps it up.
Okay, so I'm Kathy Corral. And we're going to talk about the officer trip coming up in January. So January 18th and 19th, we'll be heading to the wilderness, right, maybe the wilderness, or the delves. We should stay in cabin, and we plan out the seventh semester of FFA. We already came up with all of our list of ideas for our activities, we just have to quickly explore it, and also find out like which members are going to participate in which conferences or CDE teams and all that stuff, so let's do more part.
So other things that we do, so when we leave for the trip, we go to a big weekly stop usually, and we buy like food to make dinner and breakfast, and we all learn together to make that. And then we also do secret snow plays, so that's like secret Santa, but we do during finals week, which usually is when that trip falls on, so then we're not stressed out with the always want presents and everything. And then this year, we're going to try to do the escape room in the delves, and if we have time, we go to the water park, we do fun stuff like that with planning, so then we're not stressed out. Very good.
Well, we just wanted to say, thanks for letting us come, and really appreciate the support of the school board and administration. We definitely would not be as successful if we didn't have the support of you, so thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
Well, and I will actually say, this, this FFA program is very much a part of you, Kim, and you are doing a phenomenal job having someone else in the family as part of the FFA, I hear your name all the time mentioned, so thank you to you, and thank you to all of you students as well for coming. It's really fun for the board members to hear from students and to kind of learn what you're doing directly from you, so we appreciate you coming in. So with that, does anybody have any questions, or?
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
So there was a question I was forwarded, it was, what is the educational impact of all this? I'm just kidding, Ms. Hauser asked it.
You should have used that with my horse, that you could have delayed it. You should have used my entire sentence. Oh, come on, Isaiah.
It was forwarded by Ms. Hauser. To put you as well, no, good luck, sounds like a lot of fun.
Aren't you going to make them answer it?
No.
I will say, just I mean, and I think knowing you guys a little bit here on this board now, and knowing our admin team, what you just did right now, having to get up in front of relative strangers, that's an accomplishment, and that's something that's tough to learn in other aspects of your life, so that's a good thing, that's a benefit of being a member of FFA. The leadership activities that you talked about, and the things that you're talking about doing, things like raising money for a cause, those were all very good life lessons, and you'd be hard pressed to find somebody that's more supportive of education and rigor, and let's learn a lot of stuff, but the real side of me looks back on my educational career, and if you said like Jordan, Mr. Sims, what do you remember from physics your senior year? I'd struggle to come up with a lot of really good examples right now. If you ask me what I learned from student council, or from playing sports or being in other activities, I could probably come up with a lot of examples. So I say that because what you're doing right now, what you're learning, these will be lifelong memories. So enjoy it, appreciate it, because in 20 years, you could be balding and not be a part of fun activities like FFA. And then you'll look back on that and say, wow, like that was really cool. So kudos to you guys, kudos to your advisor for pushing you to do good things and to be good people, and enjoy what you have right now, because you'll look back someday and realize how cool it was, so.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
If nothing else, I will take a motion for approval for the overnight trips.
So, I'll sign it.
Thank you, Isaiah and James, anything else? Hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Bart.
Yeah.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have fun. We'll try to get Dr. to come back. It wasn't the experience of Gary, we didn't, they wouldn't announce who was performing until about two weeks ago, but like all the AIG teachers are crazy, and so we're looking at like, who is not performing, and where are they going to be? And Dr. Brooks, and somebody else was...
Jay-Z next year.
All right. We've been back up then, T41, I just want to just let everybody know, reminder, get out, keep talking about the survey, remind everybody to make sure that they completed. You'll have questions, let us know. Keep going. All right, we got a big agenda, so we'll move on to admin.
Yeah, whatever.
What do we want?
Yep.
Kelly, go.
Okay.
How do you read, isn't it?
Sure, Scott.
Cool. Okay, I'll go, no problem. Okay, so just like every month, we've got updated enrollment numbers for you. Probably the same as last month, which is a good thing, we've got 236 kids in our seats. I also just wanted to highlight some of those upcoming things that are happening, both that, some are shared with names, although some are kind of specific to our school for the month of October, so it's a busy kind of half of the month for us, which is pretty cool. We had a, an early release day on the 19th of September, in which we met as a staff to begin the work on essential standards, which we met as a whole group first, and then I kind of, with some direction and guidance, they were tasked to kind of continue working or start working on some essential standards for ELD and math. And so, once that happened, and that becomes kind of the topics of our PLC meetings, we'll need as a team there for creative work. And again, so we focused those around the four kind of essential questions of PLC again, so to reiterate those, what do we want our students to know and be able to do, how will we know if they've learned it, what will we do if they don't know it, and what will we do if they already know it? So this was really the first step in a, in a larger process, so I'm pleased to say we're good, we've got some good, and we go in on those standards, so now the, the rework can begin, which is very exciting from my perspective. We also got, got through our math testing for kindergarteners, first grade and second grade. We do reading and math, and there are kind of four areas that reading looks at, I added this this evening, so you don't see that. So in reading, it talks, it addresses foundational skills, literature and informational text, language and writing, and vocabulary use and functions. And then for math, it goes into operations and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, number and operations, and then geometry. So those are kind of the four categories of each of those. When we get reports back, it tells us if a student is low, low average, average, high average or high, and all four of those things too, when we look at those two reports. I also kind of gave you some data that I generated for you to kind of look at. Math, I used to break it up into fifths, but I don't, my brain doesn't work like that, I prefer quartiles, it's a lot easier for me to manage. And so you can see there for kindergartners, we've got, you know, if you're looking at the 025th percentile, there are seven students that fell within that category, 27 students are in that kind of lower to average range there. Yeah, so then you can just kind of see as it goes. Green is obviously the higher end, the red is more alarming, and so we met with Kelly and Amy at the school to kind of talk about how we're going to intervene, and those would be the kids that we'd be looking at doing interventions on. Same kind of thing for math, you can see those numbers are not identical, but they're, they're pretty similar. When Jordan looked at this, he said, looks good, he'll be interested to hear kind of my take on the kindergarten numbers. So really, this is their first go around doing anything, for a lot of them, it was their first time at a computer that has a mouse and like a screen that they don't have to touch and all this stuff, so a lot of this stuff, even my own daughter, I watched her, and she was just kind of like, hmm, for math, she didn't care what she was doing. And I was standing there going, you don't know how to do that, what are you doing like that? I didn't say anything, but just kind of let her do her thing.
You didn't cough C.
No, no. And that's the tricky part, is when I ask for help, you just, you can't, even like you don't want to, read it and move along. So yeah, definitely. So there's no real rhyme or reason for kindergarten, it's just, they're just funny like that, they're five, and they don't... Yeah.
They're five.
They are five. So that's my answer, they're five. But, you know, in all seriousness, next time we do this, we'll anticipate those, those numbers will just kind of shift in the other direction, because again, if we're focusing on those essentials, math is designed around common core, which so is our reading and math programs, and so there's some cut that will be there with skills and all that, so we would anticipate focusing on those essentials will get better results the next time around. First grade, you can see both reading and math, we've got kind of a higher percentage of our kiddos who are above the 50th percentile, which is great, not as many kids needing intervention there, which is exciting. Second grade, however, has even less than that, their numbers are very good, they've got a large percentage of those kids who are doing very well, so that's fantastic to see as well. Again, with some practice and some intervention and practice on those standards, hopefully the idea of success will shift the other direction. So that's just, I kind of wanted to report those results to you, and I'll keep you kind of updated as we move along with that. So any questions about anything there?
Thanks for doing the graphs, that helped, it really, I mean, it's just...
Just from a practical standpoint, Scott is right, I sent him a very brief email, I said, looks good overall, I'm curious what you think about the kindergarten, and I'm very okay with his explanation, they're five, I have one in my house. And she's, yeah, she's six, and she's still six. But I think the other piece in this to me is celebration, and it's just one piece, there's lots of pieces to the puzzle. But if you look at the first and second grade, and look at where those students came in on this go around, as I was sitting in their SIP work today, I just quickly crunched the second set of numbers in my head and said, how many of our students are above that 50th percentile? Well, in both grades, it's over 70% of our students are at that level. I, I think that's pretty good. So that's something we should, we should be happy about, and Liz is going to share some information as well, so if you walk out with one takeaway from some of this data you've seen tonight, there's evidently some good things going on, and some things to build on, and I think that's the most exciting thing, is we're not starting from scratch here on anything, there's, there's some really encouraging information. The educator side of us then says, okay, we have this data, we know where we're at now, even the kids that are high, what can we do for them to help them continue to grow? Because that's sometimes where we fall off of it, we focus all of our energy on one side and not just on each individual student, so that's the challenge, but I just had to throw that in there, because if you have no context for data, your context can be, this is pretty good, so that's a celebration, something to be proud of. So I just had to throw that in there.
True. Thank you. Okay, and then finally, just kind of the other part of my position, with assessments, we've got PALS for preschool coming up in the next couple of weeks, they're going to be here and there. High school, we've got some kids taking the PSAT that Liz is spearheaded, how many do you have, nine?
I have 28.
28, oh good, yeah.
Wow.
Last I heard, it was nine, so apparently they've got some...
So we've been, you know, there's been some...
Yeah. That's fantastic. And that's happening in October, correct?
Like, it happens Wednesday.
Two days from now, cool.
Yep.
Just like it says there. Man, okay. So our state report card was released, what, I don't know if it was public or not. So it's just kind of in one spot, but it will end tomorrow, I believe, maybe not.
Oh, not yet.
Then forget that. I thought it was in November. Oh, it's in November. So in November, we'll report on kind of that for public consumption.
So yes, we got the preliminary school report card. What I feel safe and sane is that too, certainly acceptable, you don't have to have a panic attack waiting for the real one, we're okay. But where it's at right now, as I just shared with the admin team and said, they give you an opportunity to review and see if you notice any discrepancies, which you have to be really into the school report card to notice a discrepancy, because how they arrive at some of these numbers is nearly a mystery. So we will look at the school report card, if we see anything that looks amiss, we'll follow up with a DPI, but no, at first glance, our school report card is fine, but when it's not, embargo will share it.
And then the last thing, if it gets on there, I have, it just came up, that I knew about it, I have, I receive it tomorrow for a DAP meeting, I don't know what it's about, the fall meeting, so I'm excited to learn more about what this all means. It's so kind of nebulous for me, so that's it.
Yeah, I'm back, less than, lost you two weeks from the last time I was here, so not a lot has changed, but a couple of things that have happened at the middle school and high school, I've worked with seniors on ACT retesting and admissions, so we, I did a classroom presentation, Kathy Haged asked me to come in and talk about those things and help students, you know, if they're going to make the decision to retest, what do they need to focus on, and what does that look like? In an effort to transfer more leadership to students, Megan Bills Kemper, who advises student council, spoke with me, and they're going to have two subcommittees on student council, a student leadership subcommittee and a student spirit, and each subcommittee will meet each month and then report to the larger organization. And then the officer team will come meet with me each month to discuss student concerns and ideas. So we will have a feedback group with kids, starting here shortly. We, as part of PLC, we are working on our CIP goal through the PLC process, and so we crafted together a universal reading assessment that would measure student progress, and then the SIP team and I wrote a school-wide student learning objective and professional practice school for teachers to use as part of their educator effectiveness evaluation. And then we administer the fall ACT inspire interim, and I attach the score results for six, seven, and eight. And we are using those score results to drive our intervention cycle, which is starting tomorrow, which has been an interesting transition, but I'll talk about test scores first, because they're actually quite, quite solid. So sixth grade test scores, our kids are at benchmark, so the current, the interim benchmark is 159, and we are right at 159. And then our current benchmark, well, it's actually 151.
No, I did that wrong.
159. And then our math benchmark for sixth grade is, they're just .7 below, which is at 158, they're at 157.3. So our kids are testing in sixth grade in the 59th percentile for reading and the 47th for math. And we do have, the sixth grade class needs some work with text complexity, which simply means that we need to increase their reading ability with more complex materials as they age. And this is part of the focus of our intervention time that we're starting. And then when you look at seventh grade, you will see that they are below benchmark a little bit on reading, 160.7. The national benchmark is 161, so they're .3 off the benchmark, but they are... The national benchmark is 161. So they're .3 off the benchmark, but they are above benchmark in math at 161.6. They're a little bit stronger reading and math, 71st and 68th percentile respectively. And they're a little stronger with their progress with text complexity, but there is still some to do there. And then eighth grade is continuing their academic strength. When you look at this class across three years, the last three years, they have been academically strong historically. And they are continuing this trend. So they are meeting benchmark. They're at 161.3 in reading and 163.1 in math and 91st percentile for reading. So our eighth grade students are reading better than 91% of the kids in the nation. Pretty good. And then 72nd in math. And they're pretty strong with text complexity. There's only 13 students who are not making enough progress. So we use these results in conjunction with last spring's Ford exam, which tested reading and math. And then we used, for students who had been intervention previously, we did a Fontis and Nell's benchmark in literacy, which is grade level reading or Lexile level. And an Eames Web Proben math, which is just short math test to see whether computation and fluency is in math. In addition, we took teacher recommendations. So we had several data points. And from those data points, we made recommendations for students to be in intensive intervention for either reading or math. So we have four teachers who will be doing reading intervention. So Amy Johnson, Kelly Prun, Mel Schmidt, and Don Schlick are going to do a reading intervention groups at each grade. And the nice thing is it's during that built-in targeted support time, so they won't be missing a class. If they have music, like if they have band Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they go to band Monday, Wednesday, and they have intervention Tuesday, Thursday. So we're working around their schedule. There has been some pushback from students in particular because they liked having that time in the middle of the day. And I knew we were going to have this, I anticipated that we were going to have this pushback simply because they were used to having study time in the middle of the day. And sometimes that study time is really only about 30 minutes of that time. And the rest was chat to my friends and talking my phone time. So, you know, when you don't have that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it can be kind of a crisis, even though they're coming from lunch. So could be a little messy tomorrow, but I think we're going to be okay. So students who were at benchmark, which the bulk of our students are at or above benchmark. So most of them, their schedule is going to be unaffected. They had a choice of four options. They could choose a quiet study hall in this room with access to Chromebooks and resources. They could choose to have free reading in the library. They could choose a writer's workshop or a study skills workshop. And so students had, we are going to try to honor their first choice. Most students chose the quiet study hall, which is totally fine with us. This is our first go through it. The interesting thing is we asked two follow-up questions about how many students would be interested in doing volunteer work if we could offer it out there. How many students would be interested in doing peer tutoring? And about half of the cohort that responded was interested in both of those options. So it might be a way forward here, particularly in that January cycle, to train students in peer tutoring and have them also work with their peers and provide support, particularly in that quiet study hall setting. So we are going to work on that during this first intervention cycle. So onward, even though they probably already, Friday, I know some eighth grade girls would will, and they've tied me to a stake and burned me alive. So. Which is fine because I'm a pole. It's fun. So hopefully we've talked them off the ledge and we'll be okay tomorrow. And if not, if there's a little smoke coming out of the building, just ignore it. So, but we've had a good couple of weeks here and October is flying already. So it'll be, we'll have to have this at the end of the month before we know it.
Thankfully.
Yeah, just, I mean, very similar to what I mentioned about Scott and the results, obviously that he shared, but now that Liz shared with the ACT Aspire. Quite promising in terms of kind of where we're at at this point. The one with the ninth grade, that's, that's mind blowing, to be honest. So that's phenomenal. The other thing that I couldn't help but notice, Liz was here for this, so I'll give her credit because I'm sure this was all very purposeful. From our future search, the notion of student voice and choice a little bit involving students, things like the PSAT, giving them the option to explore that, giving kids options on what this time may look like. I'll be with some parameters, student council, empowering those kids to make some decisions on leadership and what's good and what we could do better in school. To me, those are all examples. So I added that to my to-do list to make sure I put that in that feedback because those are very clear examples of empowering kids, student choice. So good job and good work. That's very good to hear.
Yes, the 28 kids are taking the PSAT with me on Wednesday. We're going to rock it. It'll be fun.
That's a good thing. That's a good student opportunity. So in thanks to you for leading that with all your leadership and what happened, so.
You're going to take it for fun?
I love a good test. I did my pre-administration session tomorrow, second hour, I have a little PowerPoint and everything. I'm such a nerd.
Anything else for Liz? All right. Thank you, Liz. Well, Kelly's going to come down. You guys may, she's got a short presentation. Wow. So my board report, I kept it short, but I'll let you slide around. Talk a little bit as she gets that thing where it.
The standard of technology is cooperating.
Talk nicely.
Positive bias.
I always have, for some reason, it always takes me a few, but. Now it's still a red light. There we go. It just took a little bit. It's called the safety.
I wanted to give Kelly the majority of my time, but I just want to say a couple of things. The Moon Science Club, it's a go again this year, which we're excited about. Michelle Harris, UW, professor at UW Madison. What she does is she, what she means with her fire core, the master groups, she's just looking for volunteers. And I think they had four college kids that, once again, volunteered to come out here twice a month and work with our students. So really exciting. Big numbers this year. We had over 60 kids sign up initially. So, you know, two big groups. We're going to have two groups of over 30. It's just a really popular activity.
This is third through fifth?
It is. It is. So they'll divide up, usually some of the fourth graders go with the fifth graders and some of the fourth graders go with the third graders. Now, two groups coming twice a month. So exciting to keep that going. We've been moving that a long time now. So, yeah, I'm always happy that those college kids continue to volunteer. I'll have some data for you. We just finished the ACT Aspire testing end of this week. So first time I really got a look at it close was over the weekend. So I'll probably next week or come back with that. So it looks like Kelly is ready to go here. Just want to say, one of the reasons I wanted Kelly to come and talk with you, change her role in the district, you know, over the summer, and she spent last year just working as an interventionist at Black Earth. The things, she's been just really active since she took over as our district reading specialist. The things that Liz and Scott talked about, Kelly's been part of all of those things. I mean, she really has been really active. I sat in a meeting just with the middle school intervention kiddos last week. Kelly was part of that. She presented today. She spent two hours with each building today as part of the in-service presenting some different things. So been really active. And the write-up that's on my board report, those are actually Kelly's words. I want to make sure I give her credit. Those I, you know, she typed those up. Just kind of been really involved with, out here at the middle school, just trying to take a look at what our program looks like, what offerings or what can we do? We want to improve our intervention piece out here. Kelly, she's been really involved here with that. And so I just appreciate, I appreciate you, Kelly, just with what you've been doing. So I'll let her talk a little bit more about our programs.
And before I get into the PowerPoint presentation, I just want to kind of just piggyback a little bit on what the three principles said in talking a little bit more about the middle school intervention. I want to give kudos to Amy Johnson, who did a lot of testing with the students and came up with some really good graphics for us to really help hone in on the students that we need to. Also, Amy and I had the opportunity to travel to New Berlin a couple of weeks ago to a place called, now I can't remember, Educational, or Custom Educational Solutions. And they, it's partly a sales front for the benchmark company where our third through fifth grade have their, we bought the literacy program from. But they also have all kinds of trade books and things. We were able to pull in some books at the reading levels of the students that we are going to be working with in intervention that we're going to be able to use with those students and do some, some of that complex text that Liz was talking about. Really, really nice books. And most of them are nonfiction. We tried to pull in some themes that we know that are taught at middle school. So we're, you know, kind of tying in the intervention and the reading into content areas as well. So that's kind of a cool thing. Those should be here soon. They've been ordered. And Amy, we're also working with her on pushing into the classrooms outside of that targeted support time so that she can work with some of those students that we have identified as not only the ones that we're seeing in intervention, but then that next group that's just, we know they need a little bit of help, but we don't have enough time in intervention to, to work with all of the kids we would like to. So we've got some really good things going on in the middle school for intervention. I'm really, really kind of excited about that. And in Black Earth, shout out to Amy Green for all of the testing that she did with the students. And we got together data teams with the grade level teachers, came up with their intervention groups. And with that kindergarten group, there was a lot of kids that we saw that we felt need a little bit of extra help. And so we're kind of doing more of a rolling, kind of fluid thing with the kids so that we're going to work with some kids for about four to six weeks, look, you know, look at the data again with the kids and really try and decide, okay, are they, are they getting it? Is it just because they haven't been exposed to it enough and they're getting it? And we can let them go back into the classroom without the support, and then we can pull in some other students. So we're, we're going to be trying to just rolling students in and out so that we can reach as many as we can. And Meso, as Dan was saying, we got the beginning of the year testing done. The Aspire, it's a new thing to all of us at, at Meso and trying to interpret what some of the stuff means and doing things that, you know, we're used to having the MAP data and knowing what that gives us and now having to dig into the Aspire to see what data that gives us too. Josie has a number of students in RTI process, so she's monitoring them to see if the intervention is going to help or if we need to potentially refer them to, for a special ed referral. So we've got a lot of good things going on in intervention, and we're working really hard to help those, those struggling students. And that kind of leads me to this, where we can talk a little bit about what is we're doing. And this is a PowerPoint that I gave to the new teachers at the beginning of the year. And the purpose of our intervention is to give effective interventions to meet the needs of all students. And through early and scientifically-based interventions, careful planning. Additionally, we need to meet the requirements for SLB or other special ed referrals. So I always like, and this is something that I presented on earlier with the, it was multiple, multi-tiered systems of support. And really the idea of meeting the needs of all of our students, regardless of where they are when they come to us. So that's something that is very, I'm very passionate about is that every student in this district is one of my students, and I want to make sure that they all succeed.
Hey, Kelly.
Yeah?
Just, can you briefly just SLB?
Okay, yeah. And I know that we have so many acronyms, and sometimes I'm not sure what people know. That's specific learning disability. Some other potential special ed would be OHI, which is other health impairment. And so there's some different ways that we can qualify a student for special education support if they need to. What we do, I consider in intervention, we're kind of the gatekeepers in that we're taking these students and we're seeing, okay, is it just that they need a little extra support, a little extra help from us? And that's going to be what they need. It's like that booster shot, use them back in the classroom. Or is there more that needs to be done that the interventionists can't do? And so then we go with that special education referral. And we have a flow chart that everything, we've got the universal instruction in the classroom. And that should meet the needs of about 80% of our students. And the tier one, we call that, is that's classroom-based. And tier one is usually, you know, kids that just need maybe a tad little extra support. And then we move into the title one groups or the intervention groups. And we, that's considered tier two, and that can be classroom-based or pull-out. And if the interventions don't seem to be working, we develop the RTI or Response to Intervention Plan. And that is tier three. It's a pull-out. And we continue to do multiple interventions of the student, doing progress monitoring every week to make sure, to see if they're progressing or if they're not, because that's what tells us kind of where we need to go. And a lot of times by the time we get to that tier three, we're talking one-on-one, one student, one teacher, or sometimes two students to one teacher, but it's got to be a really small group. And that's just part of how the RTI program works. You may have seen this before, and in just a moment, I'm going to show you actually graphic that I like better. But that's our, that green is our 80%, the kids that, and on those, like on the graphic, for example, that Scott showed us, he had the green and the blue. That's where the green and blue kids should fit in that 80%. And then we've got the kids that have a little bit more need. And RTI can be for academic or behavior. And for us, we've been using, at least at the elementary, the PBIS system for behavior. So I'm, for our purposes tonight, I'm focusing more on the academics. But the graphic that we got, we were shown this summer at one of our SIP meetings. I really like this one better. Ed, who was running it for us, he called it the egg. And the reason I really like this one is because it shows how, goes back to that, they're all our students. And it's not that there's the kids that are doing well and then the tier two kids and the tier three kids, if they're separate groups. They're all combined. And it says that the students are all part of the same educational system. So again, as I said, that's, that's just really my passion, that, that we look at everybody and consider them all our students. To get into intervention, we've kind of talked a little bit about that tonight. We look at data, the MAP testing, the Aspire testing. There are some reading tests that we do, phonics tests for the younger kids, math things, lots of different things that we do. We look at that data and we look at it frequently throughout the year. We, whenever possible, we pull teachers in to help us make some of these decisions. We always make sure that we're using more than one piece of data. Because, you know, all you're looking at is the MAP test, and you had a kid that for some reason, it was a thunderstorm the night before, and he's afraid of thunderstorms and he didn't get to sleep. That child's probably not going to do well on the test. And so, you know, we want to, we want to look at the whole child. And we also take teacher recommendation into account as well. And we look for, are they below benchmark? And those are the kids that we want to help. We want to get them off. And we send notes home to the parents so that they know. so that they know that their child is going to be in Title One. There's a compact that we send home that is something that we're required to. And it's one of the, it's something where the child signs it, the parent signs it, and the teacher signs it. And I just, the reason I bring this up is I just had a teacher talk to me about it over the weekend because she had a parent that was a little concerned because some of the language in it was like, as a parent, I will make sure my child does his homework every day. I will make sure my child gets to school. And it's kind of forceful. But that's one of those things that as part of Title One funds, we have to do. I'm going to look at it because I, this tweaked me to look into the, what the Title One guidelines were about this compact. And it's something that we can get some parent input from and we can make it, I'm hoping a little more user-friendly. It doesn't sound quite so bad, so. But then for students to exit from intervention is when we see that their scores, scores are going up. Are they meeting the grade level expectations? And if they are, we've done our job, which is fabulous, and they are no longer being seen in the Title One program. We let parents know that as well. We also work with the teachers because sometimes you'll see a kid doing really well in intervention and they're getting, get to grade level and you send them back to the classroom and because now they've lost that extra support, they fall back a little bit. So we, you know, talk with the teachers to make sure that that's not happening or if it does, we give the teachers some ideas of what they can do to help keep that student bolstered up. So again, there's a lot of that collaboration between the interventionists and the classroom teachers to make sure that what we're doing with these kiddos is what, is what they need and is going to help them progress. And this is just an example of a program that we use called EduClimber, where we put the data in. So I'll attest, this is an example of a kindergarten test scores. And it gives us a quick view. And this is one of the things that we use at our data meetings. And you can see kind of that dark red color. Those are the kids that we're really concerned about. Then the next level, the kind of cautionary is the yellow. Green is, we're good. Blue means they're way, they're above benchmark. And those are the kids that we don't have concerns about. And you can look at this, like if you look at this student right here, you can see that he's, that the child's red here, but blue on that end. So that child's skills are kind of all over the place. So that's where, as teachers and interventionists, we have to look at that plus look at what's happening in the classroom to make a decision, okay, is that child one that does need to be in an intervention? Or is one of those scores something that really is not truly representative of the student? Title One, we have that at the elementary school. And they, it's basically, when I say intervention, Title One is pretty much interchangeable at Black Earth and Meso. And the students get their small group instruction at their level. And we call their instructional level, so it's that level that's just kind of a, a little bit of a stretch for them. We want to teach them at that spot where they're stretching. Because if we teach them where they're comfortable, they're not going to learn. So we want to make sure that we're just, we're always pushing, pushing, pushing. Not too hard, but enough to get that growth going. We try to do it five days a week, but, you know, there's things that happen that make it not possible. Right now with the kindergarten group at Black Earth, because of the numbers we have, we've got a Monday, Wednesday, Friday group, a Tuesday, Thursday group. And, you know, as I was saying before, we're going to continue to look at those and move students around as needed. They are pulled out of their classroom during targeted support time or guided reading or math time. We do not pull them out of core. We do not pull them out of specials. We do not pull them out of recess or lunch. We want to make sure that we're pulling them out of a time that, because if we pull them out of core, then they're missing that instruction. And intervention is extra. It's supposed to supplement and not supplant. And obviously you start pulling them out of specials or recess or something like that, then they're not going to like you. Then they're not going to do very well for you. Reading, we primarily, we primarily use a program called LLI, which is Level Literacy Instruction or Intervention. And it's tailored to meet the core curriculum strategies. There's sight words, phonics skills. They do, they read books every day. They do some writing. Math program, right, currently we're using intervention materials that go with our whole math series. There's also some other things that we've been pulling. The key is that we have to look for things that are research-based. And I will tell you, there are more things available out there for reading than there are for math intervention. So sometimes we have to be a little more flexible with what we do with math. But we're, we're working, working on building that up. At middle school, in this week, just kind of talking about what we're doing here, reviewing the data. Intervention starting tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow night, we might have one opinion about how it's going, but in four weeks from now, I'm hoping that we're going to come and go, we're rocking this! And the reading program, we're going to be doing small guided reading groups. We're focusing on these reading strategies that we've identified through our SIP process. And math program, just intervention materials from the math program. They use some computer programs and then small group review. Now the high school, we don't have a lot of intervention support at the high school. And I'm hoping that once things are going really well with the middle school that we can start maybe moving some of that into the high schools using some of the things that we set up. But we have an algebra, geometry 1.5, fundamentals of English for ninth grade, resource mentors, so there's, we're doing some, some work out here at the high school. And RTI, Response to Intervention, is providing that high-quality instruction and research-based interventions. We match what the students need. We measure the rate of improvement over time and use the data to determine if it's working. And if it's not, we come up with something else. And Tier Three, that's the real intensive stuff. That's kind of the make or break. If, if we get real focused, real intensive on this kid, are they going to improve or are we going to need to do that special ed referral? Individualized, very small groups. We do progress monitoring. And we have to do two interventions with the progress monitoring. And if we still see that the student's not making progress, that's when the special ed referral, we request that and we work with the school psychologists to do that. So some things does seem like a very lengthy process. Especially if you, you know, a lot of times you look at a kid and it's like, yeah, I, that's where they're going to be. But we want to make sure that we are doing, following the right steps and not automatically pushing a child into a special ed program who may just need some extra support. Some of our intensive interventions, we would do, continue with that level literacy intervention, maybe one-on-one, pulling in some other pieces to fill in the cracks that we see the student have. Just, there's Adventum and EdMark are some, or Adventum is a computer program that we can use. EdMark is a whole word program where we work with the students, identifying whole words as opposed to using some of the phonics things that we usually do as, as base foundational skills. Most kids do really well with phonics and need that really strong base in phonics. But there are some kids that, just the way their brains are wired, they learn reading better by just looking at the whole words instead of trying to figure out what the sounds and the combinations of sounds do. Math, again, we use, you know, we look for what we can do for those kiddos and plan, make that plan tailored to their needs. That Adventum, again, is a computer program. And anything that we do on the computer, it's also supplemented with the teacher doing stuff. Because I don't think that sitting a kid that's really struggling at a computer for a half an hour is the best thing. But sometimes just that change of how things are presented makes a difference. We have a formal plan for the RTI. Parents are notified at each stage of the process. The intervention team meets and we talk about the progress. Usually if we see these intensive interventions doing what they're supposed to do, then we kind of hold back on them rather than just dismissing them right away. Because we still see they're making progress, but they probably still need some support. Otherwise then we go to the formal special ed evaluation. These are just some examples of some of the kinds of graphs that we use. The lines with the two red squares, that would be the benchmark. That would be where we would expect the children to be. And then you can see, because we're dealing with actual human beings, that it goes all over the place sometimes, you know? And there's times you'll be, you'll have two or three weeks and the kid's just chugging along and you're just like, yes! And then they have one weekend and it's like, boom! But that's, I mean, we're like, you know, as adults, that happens to us too. So we look at those and, you know, that's just some of the data that we show to indicate whether they're doing well or whether we need to get more intensive. It's a problem-solving approach. We just want to, sometimes we need to do things differently and think differently. And what can we do to help these kiddos? What are the problems that they're having? What might be the causes? How can we help the kids? And so I don't know if anyone has any questions, but we have some really great teachers, both in intervention and in the classroom, that are doing amazing work to help our struggling students catch the, make grade level expectations. And it's, it's great to see. And the best thing that can ever happen to an interventionist is when they can dismiss a kid. And I've been able to do that. And it's just like, in, in that case, I always say it's like this much of me helping, but it's that much of their hard work. So thank you for the time and, you know, feel free anytime to, if you have questions about this kind of stuff, you know, just let me know.
I just wanted to touch on, I think it's so great to hear you touched on providing for all students. And I think that reinforces something that we've, you know, talked about maintaining for a while, but providing opportunities and success for all students.
Yeah.
And how awesome it is to have somebody like you in your role that's devoted and passionate about that. And certainly it's like music to our ears when, you know, you can have admin and staff that are the ones implementing it. You don't even expect it, but then to have it carried out is awesome. So thanks for that.
Yeah, well, I don't know if any of you guys know, but I'm a Heights grad. So I feel like I'm at home and I think that, I've always been passionate, but I think being back here just kind of booms up that because I really, I really feel like these kids are mine.
Awesome.
In fact, I think some of them are probably grandkids of some of my classmates, so.
We won't get into that though. But it is extremely informative. Oh my goodness, this is wonderful to hear this. And Dan and I have talked a few times about what do we do for, for kids? And this is really helpful to understand.
Good.
What's going on.
I know it's a lot of stuff in a short amount of time, but.
Couple of highlights, well Josie Geisert served in this role for many years, did a fantastic job. A lot of the things that we're doing, you know, in part because Josie had established. With the change in positions, it allowed us to just step back, reset a little bit. One of the things that we did is we looked at our specialist's schedule and what they were doing. And so we revamped her schedule a little bit so we freed her up to spend more time out here at the middle school. To start the year, seeing less kids in the groups and working more with the adults. And getting that in place was really important for us as we, as we were planning to move forward. And Kelly's grabbed right onto that and just appreciate that. Josie's collaboration and help just with the transition has been wonderful as well. So that, you know, I want to, you know, give her some credit too because that, that, that is, is part of it. One of the things that she mentioned here, you know, the first time a parent hears or gets that letter from school, that can be tough. So, you know, the idea of us taking a look at that and seeing if we can do a better job with that. Because that's always a little scary, especially if you have a kindergarten and here we are, just starting them in October. And so we want to continue to be sensitive to that. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're helping all the, all the kids with that. And the middle school piece that Liz talked about is, it's difficult because part of that is some of those kids have been in interventions through elementary school. And, you know, worked really hard to get out here and think, okay, finally.
Freedom.
Freedom. And, oh, you know, got to, you know, because we, we just got to take advantage of, of the opportunity to get them where they should be.
And there's, I need to talk to the guidance department about this, but any students that have been seen through Title One, Wisconsin Title One Association offers a $1,500 scholarship. So I'm going to be really pushing that for our seniors who, and, and they, they could have been in Title One for a week and they would qualify to do this. And it's, they give out like four or five of them and 1,500 bucks, I mean. I've got, I've got a son that's a sophomore in college right now, so, you know, I know what it's, what it is. So, you know, you hear of any seniors that are looking for scholarships and may have had any Title One services at all, you know, let them have them contact me or I'll get in contact with Mr. Wong and let him know, share that information because that's, you know, if they're, if somebody's going to give our kids money, you're crazy.
Kelly also serves, you have a fancy title with Title One?
I'm the co-president of the Wisconsin Title One Association. And I, as co-president, I am the co-chair of our 2019 Spring Conference. And we have got some pretty awesome rock star literacy people coming in. Purnell Rippe and Jan Richardson, which, you know, most people outside of literacy are like, oh, I don't know. But those are like, to me, it's like, oh! It's like, I get to see Garth Brooks!
I'm with you now.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we're regathering, I just want to thank Kelly too and obviously the collaboration with her and Josie has been great. But the notion of getting people and then empowering them to kind of take things and run with it, I think that's the big takeaway that I have with Kelly is, she has stepped into this role and is running with it and is really showing some, it's a great desire to move forward on stuff. And I'm excited to see what she's doing in the role and how our staff is kind of working with her and is taking that direction. And it's exciting for me, having been at the middle high school myself before, speaking here to see the impact that between Kelly and Liz and Andy and Amy, the interventionists out here, the kind of the traction things are gaining at the, at the middle school level is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about what we're doing here at the middle school. And I think after a painful couple of days. It's going to be, it's, it's going to be.
We will be fine. I'm sure you're not used to ever.
No, I have never been children unhappy with she. Even my son came home and said, Mom, it wasn't good today. Yeah, honey, that's all right.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. All right, anything for me, Mr. Gordon?
I'll be very, very brief.
Define very.
Yeah. Well, on that note, I'm actually going to talk whatever you mean when I pass. Going to great things today.
It's a way to go.
I think that challenges readily. Elizabeth Freeman, head in-service today. Elizabeth has worked with us for a year and a half now for CISA II relative to our school improvement planning. The reason I share that is, what encourages me and should encourage you and the board is I see us taking the next steps down that path. Whereas last year was like, what does this whole continuous improvement thing mean? Like what data is relevant? What, what can we talk about as a, as a district or as a building? And what I see happening in a year or two of this is now there's very real things and they're looking at strategies in the classroom and talking about very tangible things that have impacts on kids. So I just share that progress because to me, that's very meaningful. And as you get started with something, is it going to be worth it? Is it going to, and I see that starting to show there's some fruits of the labor. So it's good to see and I think you should be encouraged as well. The other one I just wanted to point out because it involves money potentially. I've met a few times with Shelley Benish from Black Earth. Post-flood, the baseball field took a pretty significant hit. Post-flood, the baseball field took a pretty significant hit. That's where we play varsity baseball games. In the past, there's kind of been this link, link, shake, shake agreement. And the village has shouldered the vast majority of the upkeep and taking care of that field.
Well, the fence is absolutely destroyed.
Demolished. So I just want you to know that we've had some conversations regarding what, what is it going to take from the village's perspective to get that field back to playable, you know, level? And I've let her know that I do feel a part of our responsibility unless we're dumping that diamond and we're no longer going to play there anymore. Part of our responsibility should probably be to find a way to work with the village on getting it back to playable order or shape. So I don't have a dollar moment. I'm not sure. I haven't committed us to anything. I haven't signed anything, so don't worry. But I'm certainly in the discussions because I do feel like if we're going to be partners with the village, we kind of need to be partners with the village. And yes, there may be some expense, but we use the diamond heavily. And that's our home field right now. So I just wanted people to be aware of that. So if at some point you hear about X number of dollars, it doesn't come as a complete surprise. But we're talking. And then last, Ken Ford.
Ford.
Good buddy. We met, Liz and I met and then we just quickly popped out here to these doors. And I share this in our district leadership team and I want to share it with you because I'm sure this is something you hear about from time to time. School safety grant and did we get money? Where are things at? Yes, first round was $63,000 roughly. This is all reimbursement though, so don't think like we got a check for $63,000 and now we just get to spend it. No, we need to spend this $63,000 and then we submit things and get reimbursed. So it's not as though we got the money. We need to actually do the stuff before we get any money. So that's one thing that's important to note. But the other piece that's important to note is because these two stages of grants are going to give out roughly $100 million, every business that has anything to do with school safety right now is backlog for months. So to get someone here to actually complete the work is more challenging than just about any other aspect of this grant. So Bill Sullivan is working to get people here, you know, for the film and for the doors and all of the stuff that we apply for. But if you're wondering like, why don't I see these things? I'm just letting you know, it's not because people aren't trying, it's because these businesses are swamped right now. A good problem for them, obviously challenging for schools because we want to get them here and get the work done, but they just can't get here. So second round is submitted. We're awaiting final approval. If we get that, that'll be roughly 43,000 hours more. So if we follow through on all of these projects, we will be looking at roughly $107,000 of school safety grants. But yes, you do have to follow through the project, submit receipts, invoices and all of those things to actually get the money back from the state. Stay tuned and hopefully you'll start to see signs that think they're happening. Right now, just a lot of planning. So that's all I have.
Is it stuff that we can do or does it have to be done by a company?
Well, at the end of the day, most of it are things that we're not capable of doing internally. And at the very least, it's supplies, it's the materials, it's the actual stuff, it's ordering the supplies. And they're just, they're so backed up even with that that actually getting the stuff here to do the work is a problem. So, but hopeful and we'll, we'll move as quick as we can. Just wanted people to be aware of where it's at. Any questions on that? Six minutes, Mark, in case you're.
You've now defined very brief though.
Plus or minus. We'll have a number later next time.
Next time, I better be shorter. All right, committee report.
Committee met. Curriculum committee. Curriculum committee met, talked about elementary schedule updates, algebra course. I'm just going to briefly go over this. New teacher mentor program, talked about even incentivizing some of those opportunities, how we're bringing in new mentors again, new course proposals, talking about cooperating with hers in college and some tech head updates as well as some farm-to-fork kind of classes. And then curriculum rotation that they own cut and paste in. That was great.
That was very brief.
That was very brief. I think, I think he won.
The objective was remedy, yes.
I know.
The one thing I will throw in there for just a little more information is the course proposals. And yes, Liz, the staff, Dale, working on kind of enhancing there's some existing options to make them more relevant and then some new options. So look for those for a formal approval here soon because in high school scheduling land, that ball is already rolling. So, but very good, student friendly options being proposed, which I think that's encouraging as well. These aren't, this makes life easier for adults. This is, let's provide more opportunities for kids and diversity of opportunities. So we'll see those shortly.
And would those require new staff or existing staff?
Right now, it's existing staff.
Staff and existing.
Yep. Anything else anybody that say? Just that a lot of people understand kind of what was discussed. Dale, anything from your perspective?
I think the proposals are well done. I mean, a lot of thought went into those things and a lot of compilation of kind of old and new and it was really well done. It's exciting to see all the potential options for students and all the, again, potential benefits from the student's point of view and from the district's point of view. And it's really, really awesome.
Cool. Good stuff coming. All right. So then we are up to our board norms and goals. Jordan, do you want to start?
Yeah. Yep. So a couple of things and I just, I just want to grab one, pass it down.
Do you want to, you know, some of the special titles?
Same with this, please.
Oh, we'll recycle your, this one, copy.
Yeah, I always make sure I have an extra two.
Hope that's it, just the two.
You have one feeling about that.
So a couple of things before we really get into the meat of this or decide how needy we need to get on this. First off, it's been a little while and I've not seen much of your lecture. I just try to sit over there and then have your head turned and try to talk to people on their side. They make it all.
I didn't think a little.
It is, I do. It's enhancement.
Yeah.
So it's been a while. We initially had some conversation around just the formative norm and some ideas around norms way back in July, which time has really flown, that's for sure. So the items that you received, there's a couple of things. Number one is just the general information on norms and the process that we very well could go through. And then the other document, just the one pager that I provided, the top of that is the norms that I'll just, yeah, for lack of a better way to describe, based on that feedback, which is included in your board packet that we had on posted notes from that night, these were some draft norms that were created at that time. And then just to give you another example, on the bottom of that sheet, first admin meeting in July with the new crew, we went through a very similar exercise and just talked about kind of what is it that we're expecting of each other? How is it that we're going to collective commitments, professional commitments to each other? And then this is what, you know, on the bottom, and you'll notice this isn't like real fancy. It's not really extensive, not that hard to remember. Even, I'm probably the 50th percentile of that ACT Aspire. Even a middle of the road guy like me, I can get this. But I will tell you as a practical exhibit, the top of our agendas since that meeting in July, this is at the top of the agenda. And at the bottom of the agenda is there. And it's just a good reminder to us as we're entering into that room, as we come in with a lot of different perspectives, ideas, maybe warnings, I didn't get off to such a great start. But here we are, it's 8:30, it's time for our admin meeting, and here's what we've kind of committed to each other that we're going to do. And I'm certainly not going to claim that merely by the fact that we created norms, it's the land of milk and honey and everything's perfect. But I will say that I do think it is helpful, and particularly if nothing else, and I know this isn't something that we do at the board level with a finished time, that may be frowned upon. But for us to stay on task and to focus our conversations and when we start to weave down country roads that we probably shouldn't be weaving down, it's good to kind of get back and like, what are we here for? What are we talking about? So that is a good example. The notion of actively participating and listening. I find myself looking at my cell phone less, not going off on other tangents with emails or other things because it's like, oh, this is kind of what we, we said we're here for. And then the last one, the positive intentions and professional relationships, that's, that's a huge one. And I can say, I'm sure for various factors, the relationships and the conversations and dialogue that we've had administratively has been phenomenal. And I think tonight for me, I don't know why, maybe I'm just in a good mood because it was an in-service day, we had all kinds of great learning today. But I think tonight was one of those nights where I sat back and I was like, gosh, this is pretty cool. You know, Scott shared some cool stuff from Black Earth, Liz shared some really cool stuff, Dale talked about what's going on at Maisel, and then Kelly came up and shared just kind of that, the train's starting to roll down the tracks a little bit, feeling on some of these things. So I think that too is the notion of professional relationships and positive intentions. We may not always agree on, on the means, but if we can agree on what we hope the end is, that's helpful. So the last thing before I, if I fully ask a question here where this will be like a Robert Frost, two roads diverged moment, is the other piece that is connected to this is PLCs and professional learning communities. So that is something that we started to just try to establish some common language on last year. And it was just, let's familiarize ourselves with some of that vocabulary. And then if you recall, the summer, we had ten staff members who went to the Institute of Madison. We started our opening in-service with a lot of sharing on that. We're doing a three-track book study right now. I share that because to me, the notion of having some collective commitments, and these aren't like meant to be punitive or hurtful or finger-winging observations or, you know, things like that. The notion of having collective commitments, which is what norms are, is something that if you would want to read Learning by Doing, which is the handbook for professional learning communities, if you would want to read that, this notion of norms or collective commitments, they would tell you that unequivocally, if this is the type of culture and environment you're trying to establish, that having some sort of norms or framework is essential. And having been in a couple of previous districts that had what I believe were relatively active and accurate in terms of implementation with professional learning communities or teams, yeah, each group that you're a part of, we started, we started a district leadership team today with our norms. We started a technology committee with norms. We started our admin team with norms. I'm assuming at your building levels, I've seen them in some cases, that you started with this. So this isn't like any abstract thing that like, oh, where did this fall out of the sky and how is like this a board thing suddenly and no one else is doing this? This would be like the exact opposite of that. It would be like, this is kind of what we're trying to do across the board to kind of put these things out there and say, this is what we believe in. Now, the flip side, the harder side, is depending on how detailed you go, because there was another example that was attached to the packet that was much more detailed. It just said Board of Education Toolkit. And this was merely an example that was found online, just as knowledge really, information. Yes, if we, if we wanted to go a bit more granular versus something like I showed you from our administration or the draft that we had come up with from the summer, obviously if we wanted to go a bit more granular, this would be more granular. This is very specific about what these things mean. And I guess where I go back to the, to the Robert Frost type notion here is I'm merely trying to facilitate this for the seven of you. I'm not you. I doubt if I'll ever be on the school board, but I guess Gary probably said that.
Said the same thing, yeah.
He ended up on one, so who knows? Maybe in retirement, I'll be on the school board. So I'm not, I'm not pushing anything. I'm not advocating anything. That's not my role right now. My role is to merely inform and facilitate as you want. So what I see though, from, from my perspective, because I do have quite a bit of experience in this process, is depending where, where the board wants to go, we can either, there's a document that's attached, I don't know if it's on the backside, it's a huge documentary. That's the one. So there's a document that's attached that just says, when establishing norms considered, times, listening, confidentiality, decision-making, participation and expectations. Those are, I would say, like the overarching concepts. And I would say, I think it's pretty safe to say that as we reflect on your work as board members, all of those overarching concepts do have application to be the board member. Listening, a big one. Confidentiality, really big one. Decision-making. So to go right down the line, but I guess going back to the process here, we could either engage kind of in this process and kind of start from scratch and we could offer some feedback on that document. And you tonight can offer some feedback on ideas that you have. And we can then either take as much or as little time as you want tonight. We could just take that feedback tonight and then come back at another time, whether it's a regular meeting or on a work session. Or the other road in the yellow wood would be, do we, do we go back to that initial draft? Because that was, you know, feedback. And I do understand there was a couple of people that were not there, I believe, too. Do we go back to that original draft and say, you know what? Some of this works for me, some of it doesn't, or I want more detail, or X, Y, or Z. I'm just, like I said, I'm trying to facilitate some thought and some discussion here. So, but I guess from a personal standpoint, I guess the one thing that I would advise, if I'm able to do that in my role, the one thing that I would advise is the notion of having some sort of shared values or collective commitments. I don't think that's a bad thing. And if the board makes the choice to do something like this, you would not be outliers, you would be a part of the entire organization right now that's working to kind of have something like this where this kind of just affirms, yes, in many cases, things we may take for granted, but sometimes, you know what? Not everyone takes it for granted. But sometimes, you know what, not everyone takes it for granted. And that's the time where if it's never been anything that you've talked about or that you know how to deal with, then it's kind of the elephant in the room, like, ugh. That guy comes late all the time. Does he know that's a problem? We assume, but do we really? And I just share that as an example. So I guess where I'm at is, like I said, I see that we could go, we could go one of two ways in terms of tonight and then moving forward, is we either take a look at the draft, talk about what we have, or we can go back to the drawing board per se and go back to just something like this to kind of record some feedback, take some time tonight. And then once you've had a chance to record your feedback, we can discuss how far we go tonight and where we wanted to pick up. So I guess with all of that being said, you are being empowered to speak.
Does anyone wanna say anything right up ahead? Otherwise I will kind of ask one other question first. So, you know, this was brought up in July, it seems like it was not that long ago. And the notion of norms is not new to us, it's not new to other school boards, other admin teams, other businesses. It is, in doing some research, I found millions of ideas out there. I've printed off some, that's where I got, so this toolkit thing was actually, all I did was change Wisconsin Heights, so this was actually out there as a document. So I guess with all of this, it's not fun to do this kind of thing, but I think it's important. But I wanted to get that feedback from you guys as well, because I think it's something that we all need to agree on to be able to have these. Because if we're gonna have norms, we all have to be able to say, yes, I am going to commit to these items every time I come to a board meeting. And so I guess I wanted to kind of get that feedback from you guys as well before we move any further.
Well, I can just address that for a second. I think the thing that really hit at home for me is the workshop you and I attended this summer, the Effective Governance Board Superintendent Relationships, I think is the name of it. And a good amount of time was spent on this very topic. And a number of examples were provided, and rationale was provided. And when I came away, I mean, when I came away from that workshop, I didn't see this being, as you mentioned, punitive, I didn't see it as being limiting. I didn't see it as being controlling. I perceived it as just being, how do we wanna function as a board, as a group of seven people? How do we wanna conduct ourselves? What is it, do we wanna be showing the administrators, the teachers in the district, the kids in the district? As a group of seven adults, we have this incredibly responsible positions that we've got. And so I came away kind of fired up from that meeting, and it makes a lot of sense to me. You know, and again, in preparing for the meeting tonight, when I was looking at different websites and different school websites, as a matter of fact. This is not rare, I mean, again, from our workshop, this is very common right now, we're doing. And then I thought about it from the student end of things. Students operate under norms. Sometimes we, like, would question how they, but I mean, you've got groups of students who establish norms. You're part of my group, you're part, you are not part of my group because you don't fit the norms that, you know what I'm saying? Teachers establish norms, classroom norms, good teachers establish norms. If you don't establish norms, you got some major problems. Before even having your first kid come through that door, administrators set norms. And so I think as a board, we're expecting those things to be happening, to have a school district that operates for the best interest of the students. We need to be student-centered always, no matter what it is we're about. And I think for us to kind of take a step back, whether we do something tonight, or whether we say, you know, bring something back, or whether we say, hey, let's have a, let's kind of have a retreat again. And maybe this is a topic of our conversation for all of us at this point. But I just think that it is, again, I don't look at it as being hindering or limiting. I don't look at it as being a demeaning thing. I just look at it as helping us all be productive. And to setting some standards that we all kind of agree to as we come to our meetings, or subcommittee meetings, or whatever. So I'm, I'm on, so it got a long, they'll never give a superintendent, or a next superintendent a microphone. But I'm on.
I was still short of that very brief.
Very, very, yeah, but I'm on, I'm on board, I mean, that's just my personal point.
Thank you, Gary. One note that I, you know, some of these are fairly philosophical and not maybe very tangible. But for me, norms are something that help us to be more professional. And so let's say someone, as you mentioned, doesn't arrive on time, something like that. You know, I wanted to be very objective and say, you know, we came up with these norms a while ago and one of the norms wasn't. And so it's just kind of a regrouping, we say, we came up with these norms and we feel these are important. And I don't know how it gives a pro, if it's the president that addressed it, whatever. But just a way to create reminders, and also, I think that norms can make us very efficient in whether it's help communicate, because I, I made last notes on this thing. I didn't like it. A lot of the things about communication, and whether it's professional communication within a meeting, communication within the community, communication with the superintendent. I think those are all good ideas, but I want it to be tangible, I want it to be objective.
Yes.
And I think to that point, and this is just as an example. So I mean, if, as an example, we started with something a bit more abstract in the why, but then as this evolves, as we become more comfortable and kind of understanding this isn't, this isn't a system of gotchas in a bad way. We have like a working meeting type thing, well now, what does this mean? What does number one mean to us? So if we see we arrive on time, I think that's pretty easy to understand. But you never know. And then the second part, and prepare to participate actively. What does that mean? That would be good at some point to at least have some sort of consensus around, what does that mean? Does that mean I've glanced at the agenda? Does that mean I've read, you know what I mean, that type of conversation? And then, you know, the second point about supporting student learning outcomes, well, yeah. That one, that could be a huge conversation, because at the board level, at an operational, you know, level up here, you know, what does that mean from the board's level? Versus what does that mean at the principal level, at the teacher level, at the, you know, I mean... So I think as just a way to perhaps break the ice, some of these things could be a bit bigger in terms of thirty thousand feet. And then as we evolve through the process, we could get a bit more specific on what that means. But then at the same time, I think the key thing, I tend, I think I just, I mustn't trust too easy. Or whatever, I'm naive. But then, you know, I've never entered into these conversations with an admin team or like the district leadership team and like, oh yeah, we want all these rules so I can stick it to you guys. It's like, no, that would not, and I think we would be in agreement, you guys would be in agreement, and I think this is a healthy enough group, and rational enough group, that, you know, I heard some of the concerns about the past. Okay, but it's not the past. And the fact of the matter is, if that becomes an issue, well, that's a whole separate thing that needs to get dealt with. The problem's not the norm, the problem is the person that's trying to enforce the norm. How do we deal with that behavior not, it's not the system's fault. So I just, I put that out there, because I do understand, and I feel that, quite frankly, I feel that sometimes with some of the work that we're doing as a district, we need to understand that some of the perceived good, bad, or indifferent things that have happened over time, it just takes time for people to move past that. Regardless of what you're offering right now, they can't see necessarily what you're offering right now, they just see, like, oh wait, gosh, don't let this happen to me. And that's just the way it goes. So like I said, from my perspective, I don't, I don't have a horse in this race. I'm just offering advice and ideas and things that I've lived through and worked through in, you know, three school districts now. So I think, you know, to go back, for me, it's, yeah, where do we wanna start? Do we start with the draft and kind of take that and process that? Or do we start with a clean slate and brainstorm some ideas and go from there? I guess to me is where I see this being. James, Mike, Art?
I talk a lot, so I'm giving the floor.
That's very brief.
I've been, I've been told before, you know, you know.
None of us can say, I don't think any of us is saying we don't wanna have norms. It's just, we hardly wanna do it. I don't think anybody up here is saying this is a bad idea, unless, unless you wanna speak about it, but, I mean, I think our way, we should have some norms, it's just, I think we need to... I guess Microsoft can usually do a special work session and kind of hatch it out.
I would agree there. And I like the second page here where you got all the bullet points almost. I personally do better when I can actually sit down and think and make notes versus being on the spot. So then I can sit, go through it all, process it all, and then come to the meeting and have everything then, personally.
So, Ward, would you guys like me to create another Google Doc, Google survey? And see when we can do a board work session? Or should we do it like after one of our Monday meetings, before one of our Monday meetings?
I should say, what I'm seeing right now, I wouldn't advise for after.
Yeah, I'd say before.
Before, it's like a committee meeting.
I mean, could we do like a, do you think we could get it done in an hour, let's hatch it out?
We could, I get it to a bag in an hour, but then how vague you, you know, because some of these are pretty vague. I mean, they can, you could really broaden them, I think. How, you know, do we wanna get it to that and then broaden it from there?
Well, we don't have any other committee meetings scheduled right now, correct?
No.
But we have the annual meeting, the next one.
We wouldn't wanna do it that.
No, because we start early. So the, and when does that meet, Thanksgiving?
Actually doesn't hit Thanksgiving this year, because Thanksgiving's early. These little meetings in November.
So the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
I've gone the twenty-sixth. That has to be, the twenty-sixth, please.
Well, we can have everybody there.
I would really like everybody to be there, I think that's a really big thing. But if we, maybe we start on the twelfth and then do the next one on December tenth? Have a month in between?
Give them some notes for the month.
So have a board work session on the twelfth, yes, please come with notes. You've now got this document, please write notes. I did find one other one, and I can share it if you want it. I thought it was kind of neat because it was very, very brief. So if you want it, you can take it as an idea, but, and I have other ideas here too, if you guys wanna look. It was fun to look at them, there was lots.
Is there something you can say?
I can say, I do have this one. So let's plan that.
So November twelfth and then tentatively December tenth?
Yep.
So it's November twelfth, though?
At five thirty. So like I can... And should we meet in the?
I don't think so.
Well, first one.
And then December what?
Ten.
Same thing, five thirty.
Yeah. Do you think like earlier, or what do you think in five thirty? No.
I think we may have five thirty on the twelfth, and then from there we can decide if we wanna pull that special work session day. Or we, or given making a lot of progress, we can reevaluate.
I just ask, everybody really, you know, bring some thoughts, some ideas, and let's just get it done. I think we've been talking about it a lot, and it's kind of in everybody's head. So it'd be nice just to kind of get it going.
Add those to the calendar. The other piece I just wanted to touch on, and this is a perfect night to do this in this office building, place magically, when that happens, is the notion of goals, and kind of talking about it, you know. You know, how do we know if things are going okay? Report card, probably not the greatest indication. I'll just say that. It's public, though, people see it, people look at it, so it does have to matter at a certain level. But from a practical standpoint, I could tell you that when we get the report card, it's not like we're gonna sit down and spend hours pointing over the report card and say, here's what we're gonna do. That's just me and maybe other people feel that. But what I do believe is important is kind of the notion around some, some goals or some things that we, you know, would try to do relative to, yes, what does this look like for staff learning? What does this look like for professional development? And then most importantly, how does that translate to student outcomes? So I know I have it attached, and I thought this was interesting. He was probably sleeping. If you actually look at Board Policy twenty-one oh five, I'm sure this was heavily scrutinized as we reviewed our policies. It's okay, at least planned. Thank you, thank you. But the priorities, which I'm sure most, if not all of us, I certainly know myself, and most of you probably inherited it, but improve literacy achievement for all students. That is our school improvement plan, so that is quite relevant despite the fact that we inherited it. Improving mathematics achievement for all students. Improve and expand learning opportunities so that every graduate is college and/or career-ready. Transform instruction classrooms in schools to ensure that equitable learning opportunities are accessed by all students, including those from diverse cultural, linguistic, or ability backgrounds. Very applicable to things that we're working on right now with the Equity Consortium and things we've talked about. And then the last one, ensure that technology is effectively integrated into classroom instruction. So what I would like to do and am planning to do is to take these back to the admin and say, our umbrella is improving literacy achievement for students. What does that look like in terms of staff development and professional learning? What does that look like in terms of student outcomes? And then what are we going to kind of commit ourselves to? And hopefully then therefore you're committing yourselves to as the board and the district. What are we going to say we're going to do? Students will achieve X, Y, or Z. And then to throw to an educational term, you know, this becomes our district dashboard. And we now have our dashboard that says we are going to work on improving literacy. Well, how are we going to do that? How are we gonna know if we're doing that? Well, here's what the dashboard says. On the ACT Aspire, X, Y, and Z. So I guess I'm sharing that because I think from my own perspective, I feel like we've done a lot as a district in fifteen months. But yet at the same time, to now get this down to more of a student outcome, what is this gonna look like thing? I feel like this is the next step. And I feel like with the admin team that we have, that this won't be, this won't feel like the play. They get this, they understand it, they've done it. they understand it, they've done it. And I, I think quite frankly, we embrace it as a team to say, we're, we're ready to say these things and to share how we're gonna do this. Um, so unless I get, um, intense objection right now, what I would like to do is go back to the admin team and to have us put together something like that, and then bring that to the board and say, like, here, here are some goals, and here's what we're gonna work on. Um, but this will be, to me, this will then be, this will get to the level of spark goals. There will be some data to support, are we doing this or not doing this? Not just, well, we feel really good about ourselves because we, Pam Black came today. Pam Black's nicely, that's cool. But is it doing something? Um, so thoughts? Reactions? I like thumbs up.
Admin, you will, I heard, I saw a nod. One nod.
I see enthusiasm. Passion. Love. You had me at hello.
No, I think that's really a, I think, um, you know, it's interesting how these have kind of been inherited for probably years and years and years. Um, but I think they're still relevant, and we just have to make them relevant to what we are right now. And that's where I'm gonna come up on those goals. You come.
Yeah, and then that obviously becomes, so we put together kind of the how, and then the board decision-making is, what decisions do you make at the organizational level in terms of staffing, funding, operations to facilitate that? And that's how this process, I, I believe, in my living experience, I believe that's how this is supposed to work. Um, we, we work on these things and then communicate with you. You offer feedback. But then most importantly is the allocation of resources and things to accomplish those goals. Um, so that will be my plan for us administrative, we just do kind of, and it's nice that these are still applicable. I mean, it really is. This, this is still very relevant. Now we just need a little more detail, not just, what does it mean to improve? Excellent. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. So I, um, I put it on our school board calendar already for, um, the two, two Mondays, starting at five-thirty. So we'll move on from there. All right. So moving on to district business. Do you have a motion to approve six-one to six-four?
I'll sign it.
You guys any questions? Gary, and then Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve Natasha Severson as volunteer middle school volleyball coach for eighteen season?
So, second.
You guys any questions? Gary and then Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. We already did eight-one, so we are down to our, setting more meeting dates. I believe, um, the annual meeting is next time. Remember, it is at six A M. Or six A M.
Yeah, you're pleased, don't.
No, I'm not gonna be here. Um, stay hollers by six P M. Uh, but then our regular meeting will follow that. Um, and then of course our two new dates are on here. Anything else that we are, need of?
Yeah, one other quick one. Isaiah brought this up, so I almost did a little investigating last year that you guys, our transportation contract?
Yes.
Is up at the end of this year. So I'm wondering if we should plan a meeting. The committee is actually facilities and transportation in the main. So I don't know if we wanna put that on the calendar, um, for that other November date, or if we wanna.
That is Mike, Barb, and James.
So your question, do you need to get that in if it's gonna affect our, your permission?
I mean, the potential's always there. Um, transportation has been on that thankfully because fuel prices haven't been ridiculous lately compared to where they were. But yeah, predict that.
While they're saying they're gonna go with three and they're gonna stay over.
But at the end of the day, could it? Yes, I am. Sufficiently, probably not. But should we just put it on the calendar? Yeah, November twenty-sixth.
Before or after the what?
So we would do the facilities and transportation.
Oh, that's fine. I will be here. I'll be in Florida.
Are you okay with us having that conversation?
I fully trust our abilities to handle.
Why don't we do that? Just because I, I would rather do it earlier than later and then be scrambling at some point, so.
So you think five-thirty, or you think six?
Be an hour. I don't see why we just put it for an hour and ten.
An hour, you just beat that.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. If there's anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll sign it.
Thanks, guys. Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'll obviously say yes. Thank you, everybody. Somebody wanna take the last?